Thank you all for attending.
Awesome. Seven o'clock, we can get started. Thank you for coming tonight. This is more people than we've had in, I can't remember how long. We are the Redding Planning Commission. This is our monthly meeting. These historically have taken place on the Mondays, but this fall, we're trying the Wednesdays. This is Jane, I'm Eve, this is Stacy, and Shanann is our clerk and secretary and takes our minutes. Thank you very much, Shanann. We're talking tonight about two principally different things. One is the Class Four roads, we're gonna do that second because we have Jason Raspeason here from Manasquetney Regional Commission, who's gonna talk to us a little bit about the regional future land use, land use mapping update under Act something, something. And possibility for municipal grant opportunities if we wanna do any of that. And then we're gonna turn to Class Four roads. We're doing an ongoing public feedback session to gather information about how the Class Four roads are used, if there are any great ideas for how to kind of preserve that asset better. No one is looking at restricting or eliminating any Class Four roads. It's really about how do we make the Class Four roads usable by the biggest stakeholder group in a happy way and preserve them for, you know, future use. And we wanna hear about what the landowners who are on those roads have to say about them as well. So, we haven't heard any about them.
I wanna listen before I say it.
Okay. We have no agenda on them, we have no agenda, no plan, and we're in the feedback phase. And we've done a couple meetings on it, and we're gonna keep doing a couple meetings on it. We have a Redding Town Highway Ordinance, which covers Class fours right now, which doesn't say very much, except the town doesn't maintain them. And if you wanna plow them, you gotta ask permission. And ATVs are restricted in certain times of the year. And that's about all it says right now. So, we're looking at other best practices, maybe we can have a collaboration with Mark, we'll see. And yeah, so let's get going. So, if I haven't already officially called the meeting to order, I think I did, but it's called to order. Any changes to the agenda? Okey-dokey. Minutes from September 3rd. Any changes to those? Shanann, you mentioned that there was a typo maybe?
Yes, I do have one change. Hayden Hill, or Hagan Hill was misspelled Hayden Hill, so that needs to be corrected.
So now it's back to Hagan Hill?
Yes.
Okay. Any other issues or changes?
Nope, I don't have any.
Okay, so with that change, is there a motion to approve the minutes from last meeting?
I approve the minutes from last meeting.
Nice, second.
Okay, all in favor, those minutes are approved. Let's do quickie on reports. Jane, you're the one who seems to check the mail and the email the most, so I would love it if you would tell us what we got.
Okay, well, we have, first of all, last time we had a public filing for Act 250 for blasting on Ritz-Toll Run, and they've been approved.
When is that supposed to take place?
Not sure. Why, you gonna go out there?
Sounds exciting.
Yeah, I don't know.
Is this something that people are gonna hear and be worried about? Should we be putting up a notice in the front porch forum, or is that posted at the clerk's office?
Here it says, "All blasting will occur within the previously approved limits of disturbance, with no change to footprint elevation or land use, the rich or permanent property." So...
Nina has a comment.
I'm just curious, because I live across the street from where they're blasting.
Okay.
Are they going, are you going to get a firm date, or no?
Uh, it, this goes to Bob Allen, who's the zoning administrator. And so we just like go over what the new permits have been, so I really don't know, and it doesn't really say here.
This did not require our approval.
Right, when this is gonna happen, so, you know, I...
I mean, you weren't able to answer what she asked, so obviously you don't know. But I just was wondering if, if there's a way to find out. I have a couple of dogs, I would like to have one or two to get a dodge, have been told it could be a historic file.
It feels like maybe there should be some kind of notification just for anyone who hears it, who might feel concerned or wonder. I know when you hear a big bang, these...
Oh, especially after the ice storm.
These days, you wonder what's going on.
A lot of crashing.
Jane, is there a company that can be contacted?
This is just Act 250, on this day, so...
Me and blasting is doing the blasting. They technically only give 24-hour notice, but I've been asking that they give me more notice. I just wondered if you actually had to.
Yeah.
We have no information on that and no purview on it.
And again, we're not, we're not directly involved in anything associated. This is through Act 250, and it would be in conjunction, if any approval or date, with the zoning administrator.
So, how about I reach out to the zoning administrator and just see if he can help give more information on that? And if I learn anything, I will put it in front porch forum, just so when people hear a big blast, they're not, you know, frantically getting on Facebook and asking, "What was that noise?"
Yeah, because I've been told it could be three or four days.
Of blasting?
Do you know the property owners? Could you reach? And do you have an ability to reach out to them to get any more specific information?
He does reply.
Okay.
About anything.
Okay, I am sorry for that situation. Let me check with Bob Allen, who's our ZA, and see if I can find out anything more and...
That's why I reached out to me and blasting directly, to be honest.
Yeah, no, that's a good idea. Okay, yep, thanks.
If I learn anything more concrete, but they, they know as much advanced numbers as possible.
Sure, and they should get it, yeah. There's also been approval of, on Richard Windish, on Route 106, he's putting up three small decks. Shane Voisin on Billy's Mills Road, a new house with an eight-foot porch for his mother, ADV, ADU. And Ed Allen on Malagash is putting up a 10-by-10 covered porch. Then the Town of Heartland Planning Commission is holding a public hearing on proposed revision of the Heartland Town Plan, October 22nd, 6:30 PM. I'll give you these. And then we got, I guess you reached out to Ansel Dickie, Vermont Overland, or maybe I did.
It was not me, it was you.
Okay, so, 'cause we, this is about the Class Four roads and everything. So, he says, "Thanks for reaching out, I'll be helping my wife with this newest member of our family, and I'll be able to get back in touch after like the end of September," so...
Okay, there's more to come from you.
So, that was it.
Great, thank you. We usually have a spot for a regional planning commission report, but let's save that for when you can roll in any exciting developments into that. Energy Board, it's not our time with them, so we'll probably hear from them next corner. Zoning Administrator is not here tonight, but I have not been made aware of anything that he needs to share with us. And you are the Chair of the ZBA, anything from the zoning board of adjustment? Okay, that's it for reports. So, Jason, you are next.
I am next, okay, thanks for owning here.
Thanks for coming.
So, Amy's no longer with us, so that's why she organized it.
Where did she go?
She's the new zoning planning and zoning director in Loveville, so she's close. So, yeah, she, we wanted to just come and talk to you a little bit about Act 181 is this big bill that is driving a lot of this conversation. There's a lot in there, that's sort of the Act 250 changes that you were maybe reading about in the newspaper last year or so. Came about, part of that is telling the Regional Planning Commission that we must update our regional plan, must include these very specific new categories in our future land use map. And there's some new specific methodology for how to do that. So, we have a draft, and I have a paper map, I'm thinking I can just leave it with you and you can kind of hang up or look at it, or whatever you would like to do with it. At this point, Redding is basically, there's three different categories of rural, you got all three, and then you have the village center, that's a named area. And that's pretty much it. Larger towns that have water and sewer would be eligible to do something called their village area or plain growth area, but you don't have that. So, you really don't have that ability right now at this point in time. That would, that would give the town Act 250 exemptions, but because you don't have water and sewer, it just doesn't really work right now. So, I think that's one of the caveats. We're mapping Feltchville Village Center as it currently is designated. If there's any desire to change the boundaries, I'd like to know, so we can work together to do that.
And is that up to the Regional Commission to...
It's over this day.
Order in the boundaries of the village?
Generally, yes. We wouldn't do it without you, the town, but the way we map it is now moving forward, we're gonna give you automatic, you know, approval of that designation.
'Cause there are benefits that flow from village center designation, right?
Right, so that's, property owners within that area would be eligible for some tax credits, so they can help with some, you know, your building house. And, you know, the town will get some benefits for certain rent programs. So, I think it's good, it's worth it. If there's a couple properties sort of on the edge of, outside of the current district, we can talk about extending it. Usually, we can't make it much bigger, but we could.
And is that a conversation that affects individual homeowners? Do you bring them into that conversation as well? Or is that a...
It's up to, really, if the town tells us, "Yeah, we might have a big broader conversation with the property owners," then yeah, we could do that. But we'll take your lead on that, honestly, but whatever the planning commission or the select board tells us.
Are there any drawbacks?
Not that I can think of, no. So, I think that's a question that we have. We're thinking of maybe it's status quo, but if there's an interest in expanding it, let's talk. And I think the other question that we have is, should we have a village center designation in, say, South Bay? Or somewhere else? You don't have one now, should we be thinking about that? We were not thinking about it, but I wanna just throw that out there. In my opinion, Hammondville probably doesn't make sense, but if either of those are something law, look at it more detail. Let's talk.
Well, Hammondville, only to the extent that they do have sort of those two commercial properties that are there.
Yeah, so maybe we could talk about it.
The logging operation and then the restaurant.
Yeah, the benefits wouldn't do a whole lot for the logging operation, maybe the restaurant, but, you know, we can talk more about that.
I know when the Redding Community Trust got the grant to renovate one of the buildings in Feltchville, it was really helpful for that process to be developing a property in a village center.
Yeah, I mean, you get, you know, there's money for these tax credits to do facade improvements or code improvements or historic improvements, so I think it's, it's worth it.
Okay.
So, I wanna think about those two other areas in town too, and whether that makes sense.
And is that up to the planning commission, or does that have to be voted on by the select board?
Well, I mean, it doesn't have to be voted necessarily by either of you, but I, personally, I would love to hear from both boards that, yes, that looks good. So, I just wanna ask that question and see where we go from there.
So, Manasquetney Regional Commission can just do what it wants, but with hopefully input and feedback from the towns themselves?
We, we could, but we wouldn't without you all. And, and it does need, we need to kind of make sure we meet certain state program requirements, but we can work through that stuff with you all.
Are there any mapping, sort of future mapping initiatives or plans that the town would not be happy with?
You know, we, so this, and again, if you want me to roll this out, I can't, I will leave this with you. It's different than what your town plan has a little bit. Um, there's, it's using some different category language, because ours that we have to use is spelled out on the state law. It's a little different, I think it's pretty similar.
Can you give us an example? You don't have to unroll it, but just describe.
So, we have, there's rural conservation is one, rural agriculture and forestry is another, and then rural general is what they call it. And there's sort of differing levels of rural, you know, shocking me. But they basically, the agricultural and forestry version and the conservation version, very similar. Both allow development, but at lower, generally, they want to see a lower density, so that's very similar with the town plan.
That's like the RC 25 that we have right now?
Similar, although not that specific, yes. And generally speaking, these areas just wanna try to minimize forest fragmentation and those sorts of things. So, I think they're fairly similar. The rural general is kind of like, you know, rural, I can't remember the categories that you, I didn't hear your town plan off the top of my head, but it's very similar. I think the geography on the map might be a little bit different, so we want, you know, just wanna make sure we're all looking at it, and if there's questions or concerns, then we can talk about it.
So, Jason, you're, I'm trying to read between all that information and get to the point that you're not planning on doing anything different than what exists currently. Just changing a little bit of language, or, or is there, are there some fundamental changes that we need to highlight?
So, if you, I mean, the average person doesn't know what our regional plan says today. So, the future regional plan will probably be similar, but the new version is gonna have a lot more implications for the town. So, I just wanna make sure we're all looking at it, and there are changes. So, we have to use these statutes where you really use categories. And I just wanna make sure, I think I just wanted to introduce this tonight, and we can drill down more as needed.
So, there will be more detailed presentations in our monthly meetings as we go forward?
You know, I could come back and talk in more detail about these areas. And we can also, I have not done it in a while, like, look at your town plan and then what's our current draft. So, I'm not really prepared to talk about that tonight, but I could next time.
That'd be great, 'cause our town plan kind of is what it is for now. I don't think it's due for renewal until 2030. So, we're kind of halfway through the plan's lifespan, is it 10 years, right?
It's eight.
Eight. So, we're less than halfway through, if it's 2030, is that right?
It's 2030, yeah.
And...
And we just went through, as you know, the bylaw update too.
Yeah, I'm aware of that. Again, we just kind of wanna make sure we're kind of as consistent as we can be, considering I have very specific requirements that follow.
Is the state requiring regional commissions to identify places in town, say, for development? Or, is the state putting...
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
And have you done that for Redding?
Not the way I would prefer to do it, to be honest with you. You know, because you don't have water and sewer, the rules that were given, we really can't give you sort of that village area surrounding your village center that I would prefer to do. Because I think that's where housing, for example, might go. But the rules we have to work with don't really allow for that, so it's not quite the way I'd like to see it. But we're doing the best we can. And again, we just wanna run by you all and see if there's...
We would definitely like to be involved. I don't think the town wants to be on the receiving end of a regional or state mandate. So, whatever we can do to work with you so that we can bring along hearts and minds would be good.
Yeah, we don't want that either, so I wanna just, I'll leave the map with you. We can come back and please look at it, we can talk about questions. But I do think, unfortunately, the Act 250 exemption thing is kind of off the table right now. But let's definitely think about the village center designation, expanding it, whether there's some others. And let's talk a little bit more about what the other categories there at town need for you.
And does your map outline what we are looking at currently versus what you're thinking about expanding, or is it...
This is a draft, a shot in time of what we were thinking, but we can refine it with you, so.
It would be helpful to have a comparison, 'cause I think we can, we can look at the new one, but if we're not sure what the old one said, I'm not sure we'll spot the changes.
Right, we can follow.
Need to highlight those changes.
So, whatever way we have to, if it's two maps side by side, where you can say, "These are different," or whether it's kind of a document that highlights what the old plan said and what the new plan says, anything to help us with that. I know when we went through the zoning bylaw revision process, changes that were requested by the state can look fairly innocuous and look like they make perfect sense, but when you drill down a little harder and think about them a little more, you think, "Oh, that actually has huge implications for these properties."
Exactly.
So, we don't wanna have any surprises, I think, or have things happen by accident. You know, if we wanna change the zoning on something, then let's have that conversation and change the zoning, not have it kind of sneak through under the wire and have nobody know it was happening.
One thing I do wanna mention, it's not something that we have any power over, but Act 181 does have these Act 250 tiers that they have laid out. There's tier 1A and 1B, that's basically the bigger towns that have water and sewer, so that's not you. Tier two is status quo, and so basically, Redding's gonna be status quo at this point in time for Act 250 jurisdiction. But at some point in the future, the land, there's a new state land use review board. They're doing rulemaking now on what will become tier three, and that's gonna be impactful, I think, for Redding.
In a good way?
I would say, pay, please pay attention to that, and I'm trying to pay attention to that as well. That's not on our map, but that will be coming out through state rulemaking. And that's gonna have basically more of a heightened Act 250 review, so smaller projects.
Does that mean, less restriction or more restriction? More restriction.
So, in more remote parts of the state, this tier three is gonna kick in. We don't know where yet, and we don't know exactly what that looks like. But more than likely, smaller projects are gonna have to go through Act 250 review than they currently.
To protect those more rural areas of the state, is that the concept?
Generally, to protect sensitive habitat areas, high elevation areas, those sorts of things, but none of that is clear at this point in time.
So, we did just have an Act 250 filing this summer that wanted to put a big multi-housing unit up on the Redding Hills, right in the deer overwintering area. And once he heard about that, he was out, he's like, "I'm done." That might be on the market, that property.
Yeah, it does become pretty disincentive at times.
Interesting, okay. Yeah, I, I think it's fair to say that we wanna be really informed about this. Our planning commission and our select board, we are all volunteers with other jobs in life, and so the more we can find out from people whose actual jobs it are to know this stuff, the better for us.
And Jason, when's this tier three expected to roll out, or projected time?
The legislature wanted it to roll out pretty soon, like around the new year. I think folks want a little more time, so I'm not totally sure. But I would say fairly soon, and I'm not, I haven't seen anything that looks like it's fully baked yet, so I'd just say to you, when I'm in rural, I pass them on.
Okay. You know what would also be really helpful, because the town has a water and sewer commission? Or committee, committee?
Committee.
Led by one of our select board members. It would be really helpful for Redding to know with this Act 181, if we were to be lucky enough to succeed in having water and sewer, what that would change for Redding? What would be the implications? Hopefully, good stuff. But whatever flows from that, no pun intended, okay, or maybe I do have a point. Whatever, whatever, whatever comes from that designation, it would be nice for us to know what we're getting into, so we don't end up saying, "Yeah, we have water and sewer, oh, now we need to do this," or "we used to be tier this, and now we're tier this, and tier this has to do that." So, just so we can have a little bit of fore, for review.
I think the water and sewer would allow there to be more development, and denser development.
It would allow, that's right, it would allow for there to be more redevelopment.
Does it require more development?
Not necessarily, I mean, you still have zoning, and you still have, you know, local control kind of thing, but the home act, so Act 47 the year before, does require certain densities when you have water and sewer, so beware of that.
That's exactly the kind of, so when we were working with Martha, there were a lot of times where she said, "Oh, you don't have water and sewer, you don't have to worry about that, otherwise, we would have to put in this." So, that, kind of, those are the red flags for me that are, I mean, maybe it's good, but I think nobody wants to get surprised, we just wanna know.
Absolutely, so I think like one scenario is if, let's say, the village has a water system?
Yeah.
And let's say that the soils, and I can't remember what's in the study. Well, let's say that the soils are adequate for good density. That would, you'd be probably updating your zoning a little bit. And that would make the town eligible for this tier 1B probably, and that would allow for Act 250 exemptions. So, that was intent by the...
Which makes development easier.
Which makes development easier. The legislature's intent was for that to encourage housing development.
However, the study was really designed for our capacity, our current village capacity, wasn't designed for a whole lot more than what the density is now.
Okay.
So, it would be millions of dollars more to add more density to a new system.
Well, it's, you know, practically maybe wouldn't make a huge difference, but I think those would be the implications depending on details.
Well, it doesn't sound like anything is happening fast, but the more we can collaborate on this, I think it's better.
Absolutely.
Yep. Great, thank you. Should we segue into the Class Four conversation? Maybe we can talk about municipal grant opportunities as part of that conversation, because if we were gonna apply for one and work with Mark on that, it would be probably on Class Four. So, maybe you and I had had a conversation about the possibility of that. I tried to share that information with Jane and Stacy, but I don't think I did a very good job of it. So, maybe you can repeat a little bit what you said to me, and for these people who are interested in Class fours as well.
So, there's a program called Municipal Planning Grant Program. It's an annual funding program that usually base on things like town plan updates, zoning updates, maybe some capital planning. Lately, it's related to housing, some housing studies, those sorts of things. But I think it could, it could potentially do what we were talking about, which would be maybe an inventory of trails in town.
Looks like we have a good start here, for Mike?
It could look like that, and maybe we focus on just those public access trails, and you know, there's, there's different ways to do it, however you wanna do it's fine. So, it could potentially pay for that, potentially could pay for like public map, like, "Hey, here's our trail network, here's what you can do on each trail, you know, this isn't allowed on this one, but this one has ATVs, you know, whatever you wanna show is possible." And it could potentially also involve some policy work. So, that's an option, those are grants you do need November 3rd.
November 3rd.
So, it's kind of a variable.
Mike?
All that information is somewhere, and I hate to use that word, but for example, Polaris Ride Command does the ATV stuff. VAST does the fast trails. The Jeep Fora has some old outdated maps, so that information's already there. Putting it on a map, I guess should be a pretty big display.
And, you know, I'll say my experience in some other towns, you know, there may be, there may be a bunch of trails that you don't want on public map too, right? So, I think it's hard, but it's just this process to figure out, yes, public access, no, let's not, let's ignore about these ones.
Well, so public, the public roads would be helpful, and like, public roads that are designated as okay for ATVs, for example? 'Cause I remember when the select board did that some years ago, and they said to transition trails. So, there are, I already knew what they were at the time, I don't remember what they are anymore.
They're Class Three and Class Four roads. Unfortunately, A&amp;Rs taken some of the roads without due process. There's no records, many favorable, it's a perfect example.
Where's that?
We all asked the same question. But that's, it's very difficult, because some of the land, like Chase, for example, Chase Five Corners. Or Chase Four, Chase Four Corners?
Four Corners.
It's a pent road. Chase owns it on one side, the state owns it on the other side. So, I guess if you were to drive and get permission from, from the Chase family, you could only drive on the left side of the road. So, that's, it's, it's items like that that it's very easy to just say, "Okay, road closed."
Is that road a Class Four?
Nope.
It's private?
It's a pent road.
Well, you can, you can have a pent Class Four, like, rich trail owns a pent road.
Yes, it is a Class Four.
And all Class Four roads are public access?
Yes. And many Class Threes are, have access for, well, one particular case, Stoneville's Brown Schoolhouse. The groomer in the Stoneville Trail goes over a mile up to Brown Schoolhouse. Yeah, yeah, so.
I, I kind of am intrigued by the idea of having a Redding map that showed, not the private... not the private roads, 'cause that's, that's up to the landowners, but publicly accessible roads, what the rights are on each one. So where the ATVs can go, where the snowmobiles can go.
Right.
Um, what are, what are public roads so that you can't have people claiming they're not? You know, if it's a four, if it's a class four road, it's a class four road.
Right.
The, the select board can allow it to be pent and, um, limited for erosion control and stuff during certain seasons and reasons. But I I don't believe you can lock any gate on a class four road.
No.
Um, ever, like, I think that's state law.
Yes.
I could be misspeaking, but I don't think so.
No, you're right, you're right, you're right, camp.
In some, in some cases, they do, uh, lock it simply because of the erosion.
Yeah.
That takes place, Rich Road is a perfect example.
But they're, they, they can't, I mean, they're not supposed to. So maybe it would be helpful to have, so we, we could all say, here's the resource, it's been prepared. This is a class four. These are the vehicles that are allowed to go on it. Um, so we're all kind of playing from the same rolebook.
I didn't realize that the select board has designated certain uses for class four roads within the town of Redding?
No, for class threes.
Threes.
So there are certain class threes where they've said that un-register, I mean, uh, ATVs that are not cars, that don't have car license plates on them with, um, registration and insurance, can go, for example, downtown Hill Road, right?
Town Hill Road, yep. Bailey's Mills Road, uh, parts of Brown Schoolhouse Road.
So that was only like ten years ago, and that was designed not, not so much for joyriding on those roads, but so they could get from one section to another section without having to load up on their trailer and drive over and park somewhere else.
But in my, so class three roads are maintained by the town?
Yes.
No one else, just the town. The town assumes all responsibility for maintenance of those roads.
I understand.
Class four roads, that's not the case.
Class four roads are owned by the town. The town has rights in them and can control them, but has no obligation to maintain.
Right, okay.
Except for culverts and bridges. The town has an obligation to maintain culverts and bridges. If there's any camps or houses, they would be affected by washout.
Is it an obligation?
Yep.
Okay. Good to know.
So, uh, that, there is a great opportunity. Um, there's a lot, to be honest with you, there's a lot of applications going in this year. Um, so there's a lot of competition. Maybe this is something we could just help you out with through our transportation planning program. So, you know, we could explore that as another alternative.
So are the better back roads?
Uh, well, we do some of that work, but not necessarily. Uh, so we, we get some funding just based on our transportation planning efforts and, um, it, it's possible if, if this is a manageable, not a huge effort, that we could just kind of do it. That is great. So, you know, might be worth thinking about. We could do a smaller manageable effort. Maybe we start with inventory at the back. That might do it.
You would do that for us?
Yes, and I think that might be good for all of us.
And, uh, who, who is the person for your transportation planning? Is it you?
I'm gonna say me at the moment.
You're doing all the jobs at Mark?
No, I mean, it would be me. It, more than likely, it might be our, uh, our new mapping person, but I'm not totally sure, so why don't you just talk to me about it?
That would be phenomenal. I mean, I, I think it could be a real asset for the town if we had a proper map showing the permissible uses for every public road. I, I think we, I think all the information exists. I don't know that it exists in one place. Um, I mean, maybe I'll go into the town clerk and she'll say, we have that already. I don't know. Uh, maybe I'm the, the ignorant one here, but I, I don't have this map, um, in an easily accessible way.
Neither, neither do I.
Neither do you, okay.
What you see.
Well, that, that, that says a lot.
Well, I think each of the organizations probably have their handle on, on what, based on what their use is. I know John Feig has a map based on his history in the, uh, the assessor's office.
And we do have that, I have that copy sitting on my dining room table. It's the, it's the assessor's map, so it shows all the parcels. It doesn't show the road uses as much as I would like it to.
In, in some cases too, it doesn't show the right of ways, um, that are open to the public. Some right of ways, um, well, Rich Road's a perfect example. There's right, there's two right of ways up there. Um, that were given hundreds of years ago.
Where are they?
Uh, right at the very end of Rich Road.
On Town Hill or Brown Schoolhouse?
No, it's on, it's on Rich Road, and it goes back to the Mini Faybrook.
Oh. So if I'm going towards Brown Schoolhouse, there's a road that juts off to the right, and then there's another one that juts off to the left.
The one on the right?
On the, going into the right.
The one on the right is Whizwell Struckery.
No, like, up and over the hump, almost at Brown Schoolhouse. There's another road way down there that goes in.
Yeah. The one on the left is the Mini Faybrook.
Okay. I've never even heard of the Mini Faybrook.
How do you spell that?
Min- Mini Fay was, is famous in the town of Redding. She was instrumental in developing the post office and other things in town.
Wow.
Yeah.
And that's even more than that, uh.
Yeah, and up, up like, up like me, but on a piece of, uh, property that's on private land, there's a seventeen seventy-something gravestone of a, of, a Fay. Not Mini Fay, but a, but a Fay. It's a single grist, gravestone out in the middle of nowhere.
Well, I'm, I'm looking for one of the gravestones of one of my ancestors as well, so if you, if you see one out there that has a not Mini Fay name on it, let me know. I can't find him in any of the, uh, of the graveyards. Um, Mike, do you have any other maps besides this one? It, I think maybe it would be great for us to start to aggregate maps from the different.
We, we just updated it. In fact, it's in the process of updating. We used, uh, the DeLorme, it's what, it's in our kiosks. We use the DeLorme mapping system. Unfortunately, the DeLorme has taken things from the Gazette here. So it shows a lot of roads that may or may not be there.
Back, back when the ancient roads, uh, thing came out for the state, we tried to get the Mini Faybrook turned back into a class four, so it had absolutely nothing to do with it.
So that was thrown up?
Yeah. Yeah, it was officially thrown up, yep. And we tried to get it back again, but state.
No go.
And then we decided we're never gonna throw up another road in the town of Redding.
So, so that Ancient Roads ordinance was, was that twenty sixteen? When was that?
No, before that. I, I forgot the exact date.
Twenty ten?
Right away, yeah.
I, I would say it was two, two thousand seven or two thousand eight.
Yeah, it was right there.
Dennis wrote that.
Yeah, maybe that, uh, okay. Um, well, I'll, I'll start, I'll start in the town clerk's office and see. Um, I assume we've had road maps that have been updated since the Ancient Roads Act? That doesn't show those as public anymore, if they've been officially thrown up?
Some of the town highway maps are just, uh, it's the same map they use for twenty years. Um, we have funny road names on there that don't exist. Um, so the mapping is, the paper mapping is, uh, you almost have to create your own new document. Because the state highway map is loaded with errors. And every year, they're signing and sending it into the state. They get their thirty cents a mile for a class three road, and that's all that they get.
Hmm. So, Jason, I, I don't know a lot about mapping. Um, if we took a map and were able to identify through gathering research all of the different uses, how do you get a new map made? Is that something Mark can help us with?
Yeah, we can, I mean, we can.
Yeah, I does it.
Yeah, we can make my app, so your, uh, the company that does your parcel map, they could make it, but we could, um, and I think part of our interest would be, um, recreation would be kind of cool, but also we could help the town potentially update the the Vtrans town highway map. They're theirs. We'd like to help fix it, you know? Um, and so ultimately, they'll have a new town highway map that the state creates.
There's also some particulars, and I'm gonna go right back to Brown Schoolhouse. Joe can attest to this a little better than I can. There are certainly areas that have a, uh, what people believe is a classical road. It's not. It's what they call an A and R bypass. It's because, um, if you were to.
So I can imagine it would be helpful to have a map that showed exactly which part of Mount Moses Trail is class four and where that ends. So that people would know where they have a right to be and where they don't have a right to be. Right? Interesting.
We'll work on that. That's, like I said, this, uh, the Mount Moses Trail. Uh, if you're, are you familiar with going out in the woods and all?
Yeah, I biked it.
Okay. You come to the Monster Mudhole.
Yep.
Um, and, uh, very shortly after Monster Mudhole, the Mount Moses Trail ends. And it doesn't restart until it gets into the town of Plymouth.
So that connector that's there is just bypass?
Yep, it's just a, it's a shally, rocky, miserable trail.
So if I'm out in my Jeep, my road legal Jeep or pickup truck, am I allowed to drive through there on that bypass?
I'd love to say yes.
Like, uh.
Yeah, it sounds like a no to me. Yeah, 'cause it would be encroaching on somebody's private property.
Well, A and R, right, it's state land. So is that the Arthur?
Arthur Davis.
Arthur Davis Parkway?
Oh, this is within that, that.
Yeah.
And there again, that's, that's a section of trail that, there's no records of anybody throwing it up or giving it away, or, or the state, the state just basically took it off maps. Now, there's a memo that search plates around the state of Vermont, the game wardens and A and R, of, they took all roads off some of the maps because they didn't want people using them. And that was the, the email. Unfortunately, the, it, the tr- trace on that email got burned.
On the state's property.
Correct. Yeah, they removed all the roads.
If you ever find a copy of that, I'd love to see it.
I'd love to get another copy. I gave it to someone, but never got it back.
Ah, too bad.
Quick question for Jason. On this transportation planning program, are there, does the town, is the town required for any matching funds to that?
No, but, you know, we're not surveyors, we're not lawyers. Like, there's, there's levels to where we can go and where we can't. But, um, and there's probably limits in terms of how much time we can spend on it. Yeah, no, no, no cost to the town.
Okay.
We kinda wanna do this anyway, so let's just talk.
So we can just start a conversation?
We can just start talking about it, yeah.
If you could poke around and find any maps you think might be helpful for us, that would be great.
We can start looking.
Looks like you have one right at your feet.
These guys may have more than, than we do.
But I got mics right now. Joe, do you have any maps that would help me?
The only map that I would have is, is VAST map, and that's the only thing we have.
And it's not accurate to where the actual road is on the map. It's just somebody guessed.
And it's, hasn't been updated in.
Five years?
About five years. Things change pretty quickly lately.
And GMHA, they don't share their mapping, correct?
Well, not, not, uh, it's not shared by riders that come in and want a map to go over, but, no. But if, you know, if you folks wanted it, you obviously could get it, then. It, how about the maps that Derek Chase sells? Those are the class four roads.
Those are town, those are a town highway map that are colored in, and there are extra roads on that.
Yes, so.
So those are overlaid on, um, what's the, what's the?
Town highway map. That's what, it's all, it uses the town highway map as a basis to pencil in VAST spots. And in some cases, the A and R bypasses.
Well, that would be, it'd be interesting to compare the actual public access class fours with some of these other maps to see.
Yeah, it could, it could use the two that.
Ray, on the GMHA maps, do you have it designated as private land or, or class four roads, or is it just, here's a trail?
Um, no, it's, it's just a horseback trail.
Yeah.
Yeah, if it's over private property, it's, I don't believe it's designated on there.
Okay.
They would have a list of permissions that they would need to go across private property on, on one of the trails.
Yeah, I mean, that's not, I know that GMHA is pretty proprietary with their maps just to protect, you know, different property owners and their privacy and rights and stuff. Um,
That VAST is also.
Yeah.
Um.
I, I think that.
Now you, they use, right, there's several different companies out there, um, that use, like, they GPS a lot of the snowmobile trails in particular.
There's a Polaris mapping app, right?
And then the Polaris mapping app.
And there's more, active trails or all?
Yeah, exactly.
Something like that, or something with an X in it. Um, hmm. I would love to see the G, GMHA maps. I think, I think the goal would be to publicize what are public rights away, and then what can go on there. So if an ATV can go on a class three, have that shown. Um, which would allow people to know they're secure going on a trail or when they shouldn't be going on a trail, when it's actually private property and they don't have permission. And then if they wanna do snowmobile, they join VAST, or they join RATS, or they join GMHA.
I think it'd be great if the planning boards were to let every trail in the entire town of Redding accessible to snowmobiles forces and ATVs.
It sounds dangerous.
Yeah.
Don't share your map with anyone else.
Tyson Road, uh, one oh six, and, uh, that'll be it.
Uh, that, that might be a bridge too far, Mike, I don't know.
Right.
I'm writing it down as a suggestion. Um, okay. Do we wanna talk about, uh, maintenance? Any suggestions on maintenance?
The way, the way VAST maintenance works is, uh, you have to apply for a grant. It has to be money and it has to be time. Uh, VAST does all their own construction work in the woods. In the case of Red, the Redding Club, we have done a tremendous amount of, uh, our volunteers helping us. The snowmobile club helps us out a big, in a big way. Uh, and even the Jeeps, the VORA, they're not as organized. The VORA group, uh, after the blowdown storm in March, they're out there in full force.
V O R A?
Yeah, VORA, Vora Offroad, V O R A Association. And our friend Derek Chase was also a big help. Now, the horses weren't out there. I could, took note of that.
Okay.
The what wasn't out there?
Horses.
I don't know. Is that true, Ray? Was GMHA out in the woods doing any cleanup of trails?
Yeah, I mean, we, we constantly, uh, uh, doing trail cleanup.
Yeah.
I, I think, I.
Even on private land there.
I think GMHA pitches in on the.
No, I, I mean, I, I, I did a lot of the cleanup on the, uh, Kitchener pasture.
I, I know, I see Ray personally with his chainsaw and his tractor out there, so I, I know he's, he's doing it. Um,
And I don't know if the actual clearing is the biggest crux with all of this. I think it's, uh, the wear over the ledge rock and the reduction of, of.
It's the, the trail tread takes an awful deal.
Yeah.
Any, um.
And there's not enough material anywhere to actually.
Can't steal it from her.
Exactly.
You can't mine it, you, you know, you scratch it beside of a cliff.
Right, yeah.
It's, it's just not there. Um, the opt, the option is that with, with VAST, is to start bringing the material in. They bring it in on, on semi, dump it up by, um, it's called WR sixty-six, it's right off Brown Schoolhouse Road. And then you track, truck it in for three or four miles. Then you track, truck it in for three or four miles.
And that's very expensive.
It's expensive. The town has helped us on a few occasions, we've replaced culverts on Brown Schoolhouse Road, we've also replaced cul- culverts on, uh. Oh, I can't think of the name, Mount Moses Trail, and the town, Glenn has helped us, he's also offered us up culverts if necessary. Problem with culprit is the, they get plugged up and even every, in the spring and the fall and several times of trying to keep them clean. Uh, a rolling dip works much better. And, uh, for the snowmobiles, it's, it's a little easier on their equipment, they don't have these sharp water barriers. But it's still, it, it, it happens, big flood like we had in January and, uh, March, you know, it's, there's not much you can do.
Right.
Any great ideas for how to limit erosion, prevent erosion? Anything that you've experienced in?
We have, we've tried a lot of different things, the, the rolling dip really is the, the ideal of that or what's called a waterbar.
Yeah.
Sometimes we harden the waterbar with logs.
Yeah.
This is, so Joe's made, um, a lot of.
We also like to try to drink trench part of the road to get the water to stay off the main road, but the state is, doesn't let us do that.
But you're not allowed to, so you, especially if it's private property.
The problem is a lot of the trails are lower than the surrounding areas, so the water goes to the trail.
Yeah.
And if you can't divert it, it, it continually washes the trail up.
Yeah, so you.
There's nothing left.
Rich Road is a perfect example, it's what they call a dug road.
Yeah.
Uh, there is a way of fixing it.
It's this high on both sides and the roads down here.
Yeah.
Take all the trees, we dig a hole down the middle of the, the actual trail itself, pull all the trees and all the stone walls and all the crack right into your hole. Put some dirt over it and then, uh, put adequate drainage.
I don't think you're supposed to, uh, touch the stone walls though, right?
No, we're not.
So you can't touch the stone walls, you can't divert the water.
If it's a tree, you can't do any of that too. You're very limited to what you can do.
Yeah.
Leave this.
We have, there's a trail in Plymouth called The Crack. And it's, it's really a fun trail on an ATV, it's.
Good times.
Ten feet tall and you're in just a stream bed that just keeps eroding.
I think I've seen video of that on Facebook.
Yeah, okay, so, uh, Crack is now another one, on the other side on Pine Hill Road with Yokimo Overlook is, uh, that's getting.
Oh, I heard that's really challenging and terrible.
Yeah, all the way to the bottom, because once you get to the bottom, there's not much you can do except try to go back up there.
Yeah. Um, interesting, so for these roads that are eroding away, short of trucking and material, are they just gonna keep going?
Yeah, a lot of them, a lot of them, uh, Rich Road for example, and the, the mini fade was part of a project.
Yeah.
Uh, that, you know, uh, materials dropped into the road. Like I said, uh, you know, you can't take the stone walls, then they go out with the trees, the neighbors have to agree to the trees.
Yeah.
Placed in there.
Yeah.
And then the road gets ditches either side of it till you can find a point of relief.
And the logging companies often make compares to some of those roads.
They do, yeah, and some of them do a really nice job, yeah, other ones, uh.
But they do it to benefit themselves, but the lasting effect is that we can benefit from that, once they do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, they lighten it, they, they seem to be able to get away with more than what we can get away with.
Plus they brought in stone on a few of the, the areas, they're really horrible. Uh, not, not a lot of stone, but enough to keep it together.
Jason, does, um, does the regional commission have any best practices for this kind of problem, or not so much?
Not so much probably, I mean, you know, there's the municipal roads general permit kind of standards and that kind of thing, but other than that, I don't know. We have people in the office who know more about it than I do, so.
NOVA, NOVA is an organization, national off-road hi- highway, about every five years they present, um, I've, I went to the one five years ago. Present different techniques of use for, uh, trail equipment, unfortunately, they're from out west. They don't have the mud and the slop. And we even have, uh, state, state employees, um, that will tell you something that just isn't, it doesn't, isn't practical.
Yeah, yeah.
Unfortunately, they're, they're trying to do their best, but, uh, you get a dug road like Rich, Rich Road. Put a pine tree in there. That's, by the way, that's getting much more challenging, that's, that's, that's definitely a blue diamond.
Yeah, for sure, I, uh, I, I have trouble riding, I can ri- ride my bike down it now, but riding up it is a little challenging. What about maintenance in terms of, um, asking permission of the town or the select board? Um, there are some people who live on class four roads, I don't know if you plow your class four road in the winter, I think technically under the highway ordinance for reading. Anyone who plows the road is supposed to ask the select board and let them know that they're doing it. I, I think reasonable minds can differ on whether that's necessary or not necessary. Do you seek select board approval before you go out and do a work weekend?
We have a form that they sign, which helps with liabilities and, uh, insurances and, uh.
So if we have a big ice storm and you guys go out clearing, do you tell the select board, or do you, do you have sort of a blanket permission for the whole year?
We usually blanket permission.
And do you re-up that annually or just?
Um, yeah, usually, yeah, um, the snowmobile club, uh, does this, I don't know, same thing.
Yeah, yeah, we, uh, we're allowed to clear after storms, so we're not. But if it's on state property, we have to get AR approval, uh, before we can do a lot, that last big storm that we had, uh, was a lot of paperwork. Cause a lot of bridges were underwater, uh, we had to get in there and do that, since the state was involved with getting permission to do, they were good, but it's a lot of paperwork for us volunteers.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just crazy.
And, and it sounds like you guys are incredibly knowledgeable about what you should and shouldn't be doing. Does the town give, or the state give you any guidelines? Like, do they say, you can't knock down the stone walls, you can't waterbar into someone's property, you can't put a pine tree in there, or do you just happen to know that?
Um, Glenn's been, been, been very instrumental for helping us. But no, it's something, we have a construction seminar with the VAST office every year, um, where they, you know, teach, teach us, uh, bad habits.
Yes, and it's what we can do, what we can't do.
And the biggest part of the, uh, construction somehow is filling out the paperwork.
But clearing, clearing trees and branches is very different than moving earth and stone and, yeah, culverts.
No, no one really thinks twice about cutting trees.
Yeah, exactly.
Endless trail, and stuff like that, but when you start.
So I think a blanket permission would sort of include the cutting the trees and the branches and whatnot, but when.
Are you doing, putting a new trail in, digging something up?
Very different.
Yeah, very different.
Right.
And before we can get paid from VASA or VAST, um, that's the first thing they ask, why is there permission slip?
Yeah.
From the town, or from A and R?
Or from state or wherever it could be.
Yeah, from A and R, it's the town, property owner. Or pro- or private property.
Property owners.
And Jason, Mark really doesn't get involved in any of this.
That's fine, I was.
Yeah.
Um, how's the insurance work?
If you s- give, if you give permission to VAST or VASA with a signed permission slip, you're covered by their insurance, up to ten million or, just ten or one million.
It's one million, and, uh, just for your information, VAST has gotten their own insurance policy now, it's an insurance company, and so they're insuring themselves. And, uh, so anyone during the snowmobile season is on private property, state property, gets hurt, got the bit, gets killed. The landowner, they're not responsible, VAST picks that up.
Okay, so.
But that's only for snowmobiles, now ATVs and stuff is a different.
They're gonna, they're actually gonna join the VASA insurance, but they've got their own insurance policies, which is through Lloyd's in London. And it's the same, it's many dollars.
Organizations have their own insurance.
So if you, if you're doing it properly and you have permission and you, um, go out to clear and there's some accident in clearing, it's not coming back to the town, it's gonna go to the organization.
Right.
Yep, to the organization.
Yeah.
In fact, it was probably five years ago up on Brown Schoolhouse Road, someone put in a trail, uh, connecting from, uh, Rich Road to, to Brown Schoolhouse Road. Right by Brown Schoolhouse, put it in a trail and put it in a bridge, uh, the landlord sued, uh, the club that did it. Uh, the individuals in the club that did it and VAST, so.
It's one of your neighbors?
It wasn't me.
It must be.
Down on the ground screw house.
They're over the ridge, we don't know they're over the ridge.
So.
Um, I.
So we're pretty careful of getting permission, a lot of times you get the wrong permission too.
Yeah.
From the wrong person, and I, I, I would say ninety percent of the people are very accommodating and say, oh no, this is my property. We just had this happen up on Mr. Hall's property, uh, he seemed to think he owned everything, and he didn't. It's the other house owned a very small section, um, where we did get permission before we did anything.
Interesting.
But yeah, it was just a funny shaped, odd shaped lot.
Yeah.
Wasn't marked, hadn't been surveyed.
There's a sign over on the Ridge Trail, um, near Brown Schoolhouse, right at the bottom when you're coming in off Brown Schoolhouse, it says that it's maintained by like the Hawk Mountain or the Hawk Ridge, do they still exist?
Uh, yes, in fact, the principal just recently passed, hey, Barry Messer, um, they put that up, they groomed that, and they're from Springfield. We try to avoid a lot of.
Signage.
Signage out in the woods, I, I find it personally offensive. The, like I said, the grooming contractor for that area, um, does a fantastic job, probably one of the best in the, in the trail system.
Okay.
And has helped us many times with bridges, so, uh, you know, that will kind of slide, there's a few others we take down right away.
Okay, well, it sounds like you guys are all over it, um, this is really helpful. Any other, I mean, we're doing this in installment, so we don't have to do it all tonight, um, we're gonna kind of keep going until we run out of steam or run out of ideas and then um, slowly coalesce around a recommendation to do nothing or do something and hopefully it would incorporate feedback and, and good ideas. Did you have anything you wanna share about your experience of living on a class four road, or are you happy just observing?
I feel like the, um, redmond stepchild of the town living on a class four road. We watched our road washed away during twenty twenty-three, and it's a one lane dirt road, and half of it washed out. And, um, we were told, fix it ourselves, I'm the only one who lives there. The other people are vacation people, I have a two-year-old child stay with me as a guest and, and friends. I find it's challenging.
Yeah.
And, uh, since then, I've asked the neighbors to clear the ditch so that the road will continue to wash away. Because that will divert the water, there used to be roll bars, but there are all these people, they're incumbent on the land and have been building. And, um, unfortunately, they've, the big equipment is remove the roll bars that used to divert the water off the road into the ditch. That the neighbors don't think the ditch on their property is important to do. I've contacted the town several times to find out if there's anything I can do if, if there's, if this town has right of way. If my neighbors don't wanna put gravel right, you know, or big pieces of rock like you do on Twenty Mile Stream. On the top of Twenty Mile Stream, what you guys just did, or what they did on the Tyson Reading Road. But they stop before like the culvert by aways, so I have, you know, and, and nobody gets back to me. Can, can I, am I allowed to go pick up gravel to fix our road from your town garage? But people don't get back to me, nobody responds to me, it's very frustrating.
Excuse me, you know, uh, just for context, I think you're part of that HOA, that, that, what was it, what, what's the HOA called, it was done in what, the sixty, seventies?
No.
No?
I'm not part of the HOA.
What's the road you live on?
Rist Hill Road.
Rist Hill Road, so you may not be part of the HOA, but you were involved in that.
Well, you can maintain it before the HOA ever existed.
Okay.
And so, you know, the new people are part of the HOA.
Okay, so just for our context in this discussion, that there are a group of property owners up there that were part of an HOA. I don't believe there's any dues that have ever been paid into the HOA, and if there were, it wasn't for road maintenance. So it does fall back on the individual homeowners to maintain that road.
I thought that was a private road.
It's a class four road.
Gonna update your maps?
Yes.
If it wasn't for the niceness of people, that road wouldn't have been filled in. If somebody nice didn't get me a truckload of a thousand pounds of gravel, and another guy who had, you know, the right machinery, who lived nearby, I don't know what I would have done. I was told, sorry, you're on a class four road, you deal with it yourself, and then I said, oh, should I contact Sir X, because he's the person who plows, and, and I know he does stuff like that, and she, yeah, that's what you should do. Sir X was working for the town, had no time for us. And I don't understand what it is, like, I see things in, in the Reading Informer where you're talking about, oh, well, should we have different rules if people live on it full-time versus not? Rules for what? I don't know what that's about.
Uh, standards for maintenance, so, um, this was something, uh, Ray was talking about, that if, say for example, if you live on a class four road full-time, should you have to be required to get permission to plow it in the winter from the select board? Or is that somehow a different standard for maintenance, like you would automatically have the right to plow it because you live there? Versus a class four road that's purely recreational, say like this Ridge Trail, where nobody lives on it. Um, that, that was all that that was talking about, so right now, if you wanna plow your road, you're supposed to ask permission from the select board, any class four road. Should that be so strict for people who live there full-time, that was the question.
Well, some of those houses that are full-time were originally camps, and their sewer systems were never upgraded, so technically, you're only supposed to be in there six, no more than sixty days in a row, hundred and eighty days a year. Uh, and, and that's happened many times, I happened to be on Plymouth Planet Commission and zoning board of adjustment, and there are a number of homes that were camps, the people occupied them because of various circumstances. And they're still camps, they've got to have a roof setting system, so.
Well, that doesn't fall under our jurisdiction, that would fall under the state.
It actually, it does fall under the Planet Commission, because you would cite for a v- a violation.
No, that would be the zoning administrator, and then it would fall back on the state, mistake.
Our town operated a little differently. And that's something that, you know, uh, well, a person that I happen to know who lives on Bradley Hill Road complained about his neighbor using his driveway. Well, it's camp, you can occupy it a hundred and eighty days a year, um, I would have kept my mouth shut if I were him.
Okay, well, that's good information, you know, that may be out of the scope for our conversation tonight, um, but it, it shows how complicated these issues can be.
Yeah, this is very complic- it's very complicated.
No, no easy answers ever.
Yeah, if someone has, that's their home and they're living there, they've been in many years and they use it out loud or compost it. Um, the, the ordinance, Plymouth ordinance, you know, follows state guidelines.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful, and that. Okay, thank you, that's helpful and that's helpful feedback. I'm not sure we can control what the town highway is going to be doing in terms of maintaining class four roads, probably nothing, but it is good feedback to know as we think about the greater picture.
Are are we as Redding residents allowed to go get gravel at the garage ourselves?
At the garage?
At the Redding Road?
You would need permission from the select board.
I think you'd have to talk to the select board on that. I I don't know the answer to that, that would be handy. I mean, if we were, we could get a couple truckloads, go up the Ridge Trail and take care of that. It's expensive gravel, so I I don't know the answer to that, but that's a question for the select board.
And I do have to be fair, Glenn has brought and patched a little gravel maybe five years ago. People are building, they're building dropways, they're building houses, they're blasting foundations. There's a lot of heavy equipment on there and it it would be nice to have help.
So I I think this really falls out of our purview and in order for a class four road to be designated to a class three where the town would maintain it, it would be very expensive for the town and I don't think there's much of an appetite from what I've heard.
The only appetite is from the Lister's office who thinks it's a great idea because then the tax base goes up.
Right.
So if they take a class four, convert it to a class three and have houses there, then it's more tax income for the town.
But if you've got a four, a class four road and they have houses there, you're already getting that.
But they're valued less.
Yeah.
They're they're assessed at less.
And it should be.
And they still went up by third, but we got reassessed.
I think we all.
That's definitely out of the scope of our conversation.
I have a question just out of curiosity that when something is permitted and it requires heavy machinery, wouldn't there be potentially like part of the cost of the permit to cover the detriment to roads that heavy machinery?
Not on a class four because they're privately held.
Because we're redhead and stepchild.
Yeah, I have a redhead, so be careful. She's not a stepchild though. So actually, I think that is an interesting question, so if someone is going to be doing construction, it's still a public road, up a road and they bring in heavy equipment and materially damage the road, should there be some?
They are required to fix it.
I'm from another state originally and I was a contractor and in those situations, the contractor has to put up a bomb.
That, yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
But that's enforced by the town. If the town doesn't enforce it, there's no meat to it.
Yeah, I'm just kind of wondering.
That's the way it should be though.
Again, it's outside of this committee's purview, but that would be an interesting thing to just note that.
So we could talk to our zoning administrator and see what the policy and practice is on that, that might be helpful. It doesn't seem fair that if someone comes in and builds a house and and, you know, brings heavy equipment up and just walks away.
Yeah, the contractors should be responsible.
A lot of times, if you were to upgrade to a class three road, it's it's fairly significant. Sixty six feet wide, so many ditches, so many feet apart are required before the town can accept it. So and and it's distinct specifications.
So who pays for the upgrade before the town accepts it?
The owner of that property that wants to change it.
Ah.
Yeah.
That's a disincentive.
It happens, it happens all the time. Our neighbors thought they were doing really great till they realized they're on a class four road and a snowmobile trail goes right by theirs.
Ray.
Hey, have you heard any feedback from Robert about the culvert on Kipper Bastion? The, there's a, there's an ancient culvert right where, just up the road a little ways from where it goes from a class three to a class four.
That near Dave's house?
Washing out. And Dave Appleton is concerned that if it keeps washing out, somebody could get killed. I mean, it's about thirty foot straight down drop off. So Robert had the state come up and look at it a couple of weeks ago. I I haven't seen David to find out.
I have no updates on that. I I'm out of the loop on that. We'll try to get the zoning administrator at the meeting next month, see if he can answer that. Okay.
Since we're discussing it, I do think, like I've heard here before, I've heard previously that culverts are actually still the town's responsibility even for a class four road. I.
Culverts, if there's, if there's somebody, if there's a camp, our home is occupied. The town is responsible for culverts and bridges.
But how long did it take for the town to do that? That would be trapped. You know what I mean?
Well, it's part of the construction.
I I actually am not a hundred percent sure of the parameters of that rule, so it's something that I'm marking for myself to go look up.
Because due to the fact that we seem to see floods on a regular basis, that wasn't the issue for the past thirty some odd years that I lived there, but has been for the past couple of years and it seems to be getting worse.
Yeah, the hundred year floods every two years now.
Nightmare that we still, like, you know, we're, it's still a mess.
Yeah. All right, duly noted, I've taken lots of notes tonight, thank you, everybody for your feedback. I think we're gonna wrap it for tonight, we'll pick up again next month. Thank you for your input.
I just, one question.
Yeah.
I'm from Cavendish, I'm from Redding, but I would love to have that map whenever you get it together. It would be very helpful, we groomed into this area a lot.
Okay.
So it would be very helpful for us to know the the good and the bad and what's legal and what's not.
Well, let's let's keep the communication flowing and if you have some resources that you think are helpful, our our email is. Jane?
P C at Redding V T dot net.
Thank you, Shannon. P C, short for Planning Commission, at Redding V T dot net. So you can send us anything at that email that might be helpful for this effort. So really quickly, our next meeting is supposed to be.
Wednesday, November fifth?
Wednesday, November fifth.
So, can I, before we jump into that, Jason, so what's our next plan with Jason in this overlay? Are we getting a group of maps together from each of the organizations and then trying to do some sort of an overlay and a?
The legges, I think, the stuff, is what you're asking about. You can come back to the next meeting if you have time on the agenda.
Yes, please. Come on back, bring whatever maps you have and we will try to compile all the maps that we can in the meantime.
So in the meantime, we're going to request maps from these organizations, GMHA, and then we're going to sit down and compare them.
So I think this is the the rats one and Mike, when you've updated your new map, if you could share that with us?
I will, absolutely.
That would be great.
Like I said, that that one that you have there is probably five years old and it was the best I could do.
Okay, I think we should check out with.
I don't call over them.
It's 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 pretty good. Anything else on this before we move on?
Sorry, thank you.
No.
No, thank you for summarizing our to-do list. Any other business for tonight? Next meeting will be this Wednesday, November fifth, seven PM, Jason, if you're willing to come back, we would welcome you. Any other public comments about anything else that we need to entertain before we move to?
First Wednesday, was that?
Yes, that's what we're doing now, yeah, first Wednesday of the month, exactly.
Just that everybody needs to come to the Fall Festival on Saturday.
Fall Festival's on Saturday.
Three, writing elementary.
In our village center of Felchville. It's gonna have fun.
Chicken barbecue.
Chicken barbecue, thank you for all your work on that. Great, so that brings us to the end of the agenda, thank you all for participating. If there is a motion to adjourn, we can wrap it up.
I motion to adjourn.
Second.
On favor, we are done, thank you very much.